Yeah, oh, sorry. Yeah, okay. Are you ready, Hector?
I'm ready, Mayor.
All right, so we will call the joint TORA and City Council Study Session to Order, August 6, 2025. Roll call, please.
Counselor and Board Member Prenamra.
Here.
Counselor and Board Member Medina.
Here.
Counselor and Board Member Pestejo.
Here.
Counselor and Board Member Byers.
Here.
And Chair and Mayor Ayersfled.
Here.
There is a quorum, Chair.
Thank you, Hector. Item number two on the agenda is Gateway Site Disposition Request for Qualifications, RFQ. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, Board Chair, Board Members, Council Members. I'm going to ask Matt Brinkley, our consultant, to lead off. And then I think we'll have maybe questions for him as he goes, I think would be great. And then I might say a few words about the interactions between this work and the peer grant as a whole. Because I just want to share some of those potential interactions between the two.
All right. Thanks, Alex. Matt Brinkley, Green Top Planning Development Research. And nice to be here again to talk about the Gateway Redevelopment RFP. And so, if you recall from the last discussion we had about this, this is the first part of kind of a two-step process in approving the RFQ, actually, as we're going, as we're looking at it now. So this represents sort of like a sixty to seventy percent level of design, if you will, for the RFQ. And when we come back in, at the beginning of September, we'll be at ninety percent or ninety-nine percent, however you want to look at it, and that's kind of the final form that we'll be asking you to approve. So in the meantime, we have some time to make adjustments and finalize things, and that's why we're here to talk about the RFQ tonight. So first of all, RFQ versus RFP. Given the kind of changing nature of this project and the possibility for some things that we might have to adjust to down the road, probably an RFQ is a better way to do it. We don't have a specific scope of work that we're asking for. And as we've talked about in the past, as we were discussing the goals and objectives for this project overall, there was a real desire, it seemed, among the members to provide for flexibility for developer. And so although this site has been extensively sort of studied and planned, and which is great, and you have a relatively recent plan and the Salazar plan. And that is, something like that is probably going to end up getting built. The exact sort of contours and features of that are probably going to be a little bit different than what, you know, you see in the Salazar Architect Report. So the RFQ enables you to then negotiate with a development team that has awarded the RFQ. And what would happen is if you select a team, you would enter into an exclusive agreement to negotiate a contract. And at that point, we would get down to brass tacks, as it were. And a big part of this, as we've talked about before, is going to be the kind of financial arrangement. And, you know, how you dispose of the property, is this something where you write down the value of it in order to support that kind of development that you want to get, the features that you want to get? Or not, you know, there are different ways of looking at that, particularly as Alex is going to talk about potential interactions between the peer project and then the gateway redevelopment. So the RFQ enables us the flex, or it gives us the flexibility to be able to kind of work on that. But tonight, the things that I'd like to talk about are, first of all, just kind of the form of the RFQ as it is written. Are there things that you would like to see in there that aren't in there? I don't know if any of you have had a chance to take a look at the RFQ that the City of Eugene published, like about a month ago, I think it was, for a site in their downtown. It's a good RFQ. It's pretty representative of what these kinds of RFQs look like. There's a little more information in that one about kind of the region and which, or the context in which that redevelopment project is taking place. So they're a little bit different, but but this is very similar to that RFQ. So if you've had a chance to take a look at it, that's kind of what we're going for. When this is done, it will look a lot like that one. There will be more graphic content and things like that, because this is also in part a marketing piece, quite frankly, to attract excitement and attention to this redevelopment project. So we're looking tonight at, you know, is there anything else that we should be putting in here? Are there things that we need to change? And then looking at the scoring criteria, that's at the very end of the document. And those scoring criteria are developed or were developed based on the discussion that we're having about the goals and objectives for redevelopment of the site. So hopefully, I've been pretty good at capturing those priorities and providing some examples of what the scoring guidance might look like, at least for the first couple of those, of those, of those objectives. And we would continue to kind of develop those before we actually, you know, went to score and then award, you know, a contract or a an agreement to negotiate a contract with a development team. And that brings up kind of the last question that we have for you tonight, which is, how would you like to be involved? Will, you know, there will be a body that scores the responses in those that's based on whatever is submitted, and then potentially also presentations that could be made to that body or to this body as a whole. And we can make that decision also later as well, too. But there are things to think about. And it would be good to get your feedback on those. So first of all, I guess, just kind of looking at the RFQ in general, do you have any comments, or? Yes.
Uh, Member Byers?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not like grinding down on this point, but I am curious if it would be helpful and informative to include in this RFQ that this is part of the longer-term buyer recovery for talent. We did lose a lot of our commercial spaces. They haven't all returned, and this is meeting that need. Or helping us begin to meet that need for a more commercial space. And it also, to me, speaks to the fact, in addition to our commitments to environmental stewardship and climate change adaptation and mitigation, I, it also, I think, speaks to the requests in here for things like permeable landscape and as much canopy as, you know, like that sort of thing. It's it's part of our city's recovery effort in that aspect as well.
Yeah.
I would add to that, and probably it applies to both the commercial and the housing piece of the RFQ, that there's maybe could be some more description in related to like that sense of entry to our community and the continuity of our community. And interestingly, that's, you know, that's changed a little bit post-fire. I can certainly remember the things that we discussed in the planning with Salazar and things like that, but that may still be applicable and it may not. But I think it is, because that was, we did the Salazar right after the fire, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So it's probably, there's probably good language in that
Yeah.
report for that kind of placemaking in a supportive language.
Yeah, and I think we'll include the Salazar, the complete report as an attachment, as an appendix to the RFQ, as well as, I hope, the commercial market study. Because we had talked about how that will be important for hopefully encouraging developers to pursue commercial development. So we'll include both of those documents as well.
Would it be in the, sorry, I have a follow-up. Would it be in the scoring scoring metric of the RFQ that we would find, speaking of commercial, that we would find like or build into like preferences for qualifiers that can do both mixed use, you know, both commercial and housing? Or is that where that would be found, or would it be found in the narrative?
Both, potentially. And so we could probably put some more in the narrative to, you know, like you're saying, emphasize those particular features. But then in the scoring, let's see, so, yeah, vision and approach, development vision and approach, which is the second kind of criteria. We have priorities and, let's see. And these are just some examples that we can include, but we can, we can include more in there that speak directly to some of those, to some of those things.
And so that would also include any other, like any other types of priorities that we might want to that we might want to add to this in terms of what types of development and types of developer could show up in both scoring and in there.
Correct. Yeah, and so like right now in the narrative, for example, um, oh, yeah. Yeah, so in the narrative right now, under project goals and desired outcomes, you have commercial development in those three bullet points, including the final one that alludes to this potential for the boot up. But we can add a little more to that. And then, and that can be then reflected in the scoring criteria as well.
Okay, thanks. That's, that's really what I was getting at.
Yeah. Yeah. And one question that I think I'm kind of thinking about is, do we provide the scoring guidance to the respondents ahead of time? I mean, we could, you know, I mean, it kind of helps lead them in the direction. I guess it depends on, you know, if you're really trying to test a development team and, you know, and determine which one kind of knows what you really want, or, you know, that they're responding authentically, you know, to the RFQ, like this is the kind of development that we do, and then we're all very happy and we go, you know, go on down the process. Or do you want to kind of like lead them a little bit? And I don't think I'm, I don't think I feel strongly.
You want to take feedback about that now?
Sure.
And then, and then, uh, Member Byers, you had another question.
Well, it was a follow-up to my earlier.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and ask your question, then, and then we'll.
Well, I guess the question would be, is it helpful, again, just as I'm thinking, and it connects with what you just said, and putting in language that helps developers know exactly what we're looking for. Just to note that, I mean, we aren't asking for pedestrian space, again, just because we're asking for it for a variety of reasons, including the fact, in my mind, that we have the highest per capita use of bus stops out of any other community in the Rogue Valley. I mean, we need it to be really pedestrian-friendly. So that felt like that, where it, you know, it could come across as aspirational and something nice, but truly, these are things that are necessary for a very practical reason.
I love that comment, because I think it also demonstrates, like, it sort of leads the developer to really focus on what our community needs are, when you have that language in, and so that, you know, they really are looking at not just boilerplate stuff, but like really specific stuff. Remember, Namrav, can I go ahead and, does anybody want to get back on the question?
Oh, yeah.
The, I don't know if it was a question, Matt, but.
Whether to include the scoring in the RFQ.
How about you, Namrav?
I see, yeah. It seems standard to me. I thought it would be.
What, so this is the question?
Whether the scoring matrix is included in the RFQ or kind of held back. And I, I think it, I think we should be transparent about that. That seems professional to me.
Providing for their ability to see the, see what we're scoring on, right?
Isn't that what you were asking?
Yeah, I mean, we would always provide the matrix that, you know, should, that asks, you know, or it, it provides what we would be scoring on and the number of points. What we would consider not providing would be the actual guidance for the scores for the panel.
Oh, I missed the.
You know what I mean? So it's like, some people call it a rubric, because it's one thing to say that you get zero to thirty points of, or kind of like the qualifications of the development team. But that can mean really different things for each individual member of the scoring panel. And so to try to, to try to kind of normalize things and make it as consistent as possible, you provide a rubric to the team, to the panel that's scoring, that says, this is the kind of answer that, you know, that gets no points. This is the kind of answer that gets ten points. This is the kind of answer that gets thirty points.
I love rubrics.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're really helpful. And we don't have to provide that to the, to the respondents. But again, it, the reason to provide it would be to help lead them in the direction of providing better answers.
I think the other thing it does that is it it allows some of the developers that are flexible and creative. You know, not everybody does a development in a box. I mean, there's a couple developers that are, that have a very specific product, but I know of a couple developers that are also really flexible and to have a deeper, deeper understanding of what, what we're looking for. I think it's just going to get us a tighter, you know, a tighter application and a better to understand application, but.
I think it'll help us find a better fit.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I could understand, same thing for sure, but.
Of course, then we have to stick to it.
There's still like flexibility, though. I mean, one of the, one of the things, I think, the, there's a temptation to try to make this mathematical or scientific, and it's just not.
Right.
And so you have a number, but the number at the end of the day may not be the absolute sort of reason why you choose one. And that's okay. Now, you probably shouldn't end up selecting like the team that is the lowest scoring, but but otherwise, it's, it's kind of, it helps you to make the decision, I guess, is the way that we describe.
Yeah, I'm less concerned about getting an inauthentic application by, by sharing that information where I think the greater value would be as Member Byers says, get a benefit. Member Namrav?
Yeah, I actually have kind of a list of things. I just wanted to say on that point, my only concern would be to put out some, here's how we're going to rubric it, and then we get something we didn't expect that we think is really cool, and we want to give it a high score, but we can't, because it's not in the rubric. That's the only. And I don't know what that would be. Um, first of all, I think this is really great. I liked the, the one from Eugene as well. Um, just, this, in no particular order, we talk about experience in featuring middle-income housing, community-oriented projects in their, in their repertoire about featuring middle-income housing. And I want to say, I think I'd be open to lower moderate income housing as well in that context, because what I'm looking for is like be able to build to the community feel and all of that. So I don't know if that's restrictive or not to say community-oriented products is featuring middle-income house. It kind of sounds like we really, you know, and, and I don't, I'm not. So I, I agree with the price point of eighty to one hundred and twenty percent. But what they've built in the past, I don't, even if it's low moderate, I'm fine with that. It's that, I don't know if that's important or not. Um, the other thing is like, so getting into some of the details that towards the end, we talk about private ownership of shifting the ownership of the site very specifically to the developer. And I thought, did we, did we already rule out the idea that we might retain public ownership of some of, I thought that was still kind of an open question. We hadn't decided yet as council, is that right?
Yeah, and I think this gets to what Alex is probably going to talk about with the interaction between the peer project. And for, I, what we're calling the balance of the site, which is the housing and maybe some of the other commercial that, the way it's written right now is kind of assuming that that shifts over to private ownership, as opposed to like you do some kind of like ninety-nine-year round lease or something like that. And that's kind of intentional, because I think that discourages developers. They want to be able to, for a variety, particularly financing, they want to be able to own it. But part of the site could remain publicly owned. And that's, and I, you know, I'm maybe being a little coy about that in the point under Commercial Development, where it's the last bullet point, the City of Talent has been exploring the possibility of developing a business incubator on the site and welcomes discussions with the development team regarding mutually beneficial arrangements. That could achieve this goal, which, you know, maybe the developer builds it, but it, you know, they, they do build to suit for the agency, the city. But they don't retain, they don't have any ownership stake in it. Or maybe they do, and there's some sort of financial arrangement between the city and, although I don't know if that works with the peer funding, so. That's why it's kind of left intentionally vague. Because I think that is one of those points, is a little more complicated and will need to be.
Okay, as long as we're not painting ourselves in a corner that we don't want to be in.
Yeah, and this is really for the balance of the site.
Okay.
Can I have a second follow-up question on that? Before you change?
Yeah, yeah.
So the balance of the site, I have two, actually. The balance of the site, do we know, do we have a sense of what the balance of the site is in terms of percentage of the property? And then two, the second question is, and it's not critical to know the answer to that, by the way, and then two, the other question is, well, it's more of a comment, actually. It's, it's really just leaning into the idea that the talent urban, this is the final project of the talent urban renewal agency and, and transferring ownership would be in alignment with kind of the mission of an urban renewal agency. So it makes sense to me. I, I guess, really, it's just a comment, actually, my question is like mine, so. I just throw that in.
You can jump back in whenever you remember it. Absolutely.
But the other question, do we have a sense of what the balance of the site is? What, what we would be offering in, in, in that kind of a arrangement?
I, I think, as we've been talking to OHCS about what the, what the Business Incubator site would likely be, we've been talking with them about a five thousand square foot building, so probably ten to twelve thousand square feet, maybe a little bit more. So about a third of an acre, maybe, maybe potentially more so. Talk about seventy-five, eighty percent of the site being the balance of the site.
And so, so there would be a, a commercial, there's a potential for a commercial element in that, in that balance as well, is that correct? Okay, that's, that's where I've decided. All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Amrav.
Right, as far as things that the city can offer, do we want to offer also the potential of deferring SDCs?
That's good. That's a good question. And you probably don't have to decide that now for the RFQ. However, it could be something that you put in there to say, you know, these are all the things that we're looking at, and we would, we would consider during negotiations. So if it is something you are able to or want to consider, it probably wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking how we can sweeten it, because, I mean, the last time we had a hard time attracting folks, so. I mean, that's something that I, I feel comfortable about, since we don't have a cash flow problem yet.
And that's deferring SDCs.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Can, are you saying that, I just want to make sure that that's a clear comment. You're saying that you have no concern about discussing deferring SDCs?
Right, I.
As a bargaining chip.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, and, and I'm wondering, see, I kind of have this, a little bit of fear that, that, you know, about wanting to make the RFQ attractive. And if that would make it more attractive, then I'd be willing to put it in an RFQ, but I'm, I'm just throwing that out there as a, as an idea, not really, it's not really a request. It's like, if this is a good idea
Yeah.
and the council agrees, I'd be fine with it.
I don't think there's any harm in. What I didn't want to do was to like commit you to doing things in particular.
No commitment.
We will do these things, but we will write down the value of the product.
Yep, precisely why I, precisely why I clarified it to open to discussion.
Right, I just, I wanted to check and see if the council was really like, oh, we would never do that, then, then, then I would want folks to weigh in.
Yeah, and that's a good point, too, because I sort of mentioned the Housing Revolving Loan Program that's been developed by OHCS. So if you absolutely don't want to do that, really kind of thinking about your role as counselors, then, you know, we probably shouldn't put that in, but.
Why wouldn't? To.
What's that?
Why wouldn't we want to do that?
Um, well, I mean, you know, some, you, you don't want to do it. You don't want to forego, you know, revenues from the site for the period of time that the, that the.
Oh, that would make it tax exempt, is that what you're saying?
It does, kind of, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's technically, it's not tax exempt. They just don't pay you any taxes. They take the, the full levy and they use that to repay the loan back to OHCS. And it's not forever, it's ten years maximum, so.
It, it's a very similar structure to urban renewal, actually.
It's kind of like a TIF and a tax abatement, so they.
Spot some.
And is the, it's, I think we've talked about this before, so if I'm asking questions we've asked before, but is it for the purpose of like developing lower-cost housing?
For middle-income housing specifically, so that eighty to one.
That's right.
Yeah.
Now I do remember.
Yeah, the eighty to one-twenty specifically.
Yeah.
So it's kind of like a TIF, except that we, as a, as an agency, we're not getting any additional money.
Right.
We're just paying, we're just foregoing taxes for ten years.
Yeah, the city never sees any of it. I think is the way, the way it's been described to me. And keep in mind, they just made up like the rules on this over the past year, so that's the way it's supposed to work. Jackson County just sends the full levy, I think.
But why, I just was asked, why would we put that in an RFQ? Like, I wouldn't, I don't see any reason to put that in RFQ.
It is in the RFQ right now.
It is?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I don't.
As, as a potential.
Yeah.
What's that?
As a potential, it's in the RFQ, it's something the city would consider.
Yeah, and I, so again, my question is the same, though. Why would we do that? I mean, we're asking for an RFQ for eighty to one-twenty essentially, and how the funding stack comes together isn't really part of RFQ, if it is.
It's, it's in the context of what we're really willing. It's, it's in the context of what we're really willing to put up, including.
Purpose of making it a more attractive application, but.
I think so.
Does that cause any worry to anybody else that that might be a default approach?
Would it be, let me ask, before I answer your question, let me ask, would it be for the entire, uh, site that's being part of the site that's being developed or could it be for part of it?
I mean, it would, yeah, it's, it's for whatever you want it to be for, really.
Okay.
And, and with the revolving with the.
But it could only be used for eighty to one twenty housing.
So not the commercials.
Not the commercial.
But it, I think the concern is like, if we're looking at the city moving forward, having enough of a tax base. And thinking, how much can we forego for ten years or something? If it was a smaller footprint, if we could make it, we could say, well, we could, we could pencil this much, but not that much, right? Using my hands here, um, is we, would we have that flexibility?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and it's essentially capped at a value per unit, I believe. So. It's not, it's not an open checkbook on all future property taxes from the site. It would be related to the number of middle income housing units they actually produce.
So my tip, so, um, I, I'm convinced, but I, I, um, just want to ask if you guys. You have it in there because you believe this will make this a more attractive RFQ. Is that, is that why you have it in here?
Well, I, I, I put the things in there that we've talked about and that could, could be used as incentives. Uh, we don't have to keep all of them. You know, in the Eugene RFQ, for example, you know, they talk about the kinds of sports that they might negotiate. So.
I, I, I would say, um, maybe slightly differently than whether it makes it a more attractive RFQ. I think we'd be more likely to get responses that specifically address eighty to one twenty housing. If that tool is available.
That's true.
Okay, but, but what I'm asking in contrast to that is if the eighty to one twenty. Tool was not in the RFQ, are you thinking that then we would get less or no applicants? Like there's other ways to achieve eighty to one twenty that won't necessarily cost the city a tax base for ten years. You know, so, I mean, I think, uh. You're, you, you've just come out of the housing.
Well, yeah, I, I, this is, this is a relatively unique tool actually to address that specific market. So, um, there, I'm, I'm not aware of a lot of other mechanisms that are out there.
Yeah, I mean, for eighty to one twenty, and that's kind of why, um, this. Went through the twenty three session, um, there just aren't a lot of other mechanisms for eighty to one twenty.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I'm just thinking of, as we're talking about, I'm sorry to beat this to death, but as we're talking about like. Other negotiation tools like S, maybe. You know, waiving SDCs, you know, if there's any other. Tools that are available that don't result in waiving taxes for the next ten years. I would hope that we could prioritize those in some way, and that's really my final comment on it. I don't have any additional comments.
Would they have to be late for ten years or can you do it for less?
You can do it for less, ten years is the maximum.
Ten years.
Yeah, so you have the.
Alright.
Counselor Penomra, you have more questions?
Yes, I did. Um, almost in through the list, um, we talk about environmental sustainability, which is really good. I'm looking at, um, particularly, uh, the on page, um, what page am I at? Ten? And, um. So we have community oriented projects, rehousing, mixed use neighborhoods and environmental sustainability. Um, we were talking earlier about the character of talent. One of the character of talent is combining, you know, community. Uh, resilience with environmental sustainability. We have community solar projects here in talent. And I think we're kind of, um, I believe the talent I know is a very innovative community. I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way to kind of, um, uh, get that portrayal in there and just, um. To indicate an openness to innovation. And what I'm thinking particularly are about micro grade grids that could, you know. Resiliently, um, uh, disconnect basically from the grid and all of that. Now, I don't want to throw a wrench and say like, you know, we want the, it, this really hard thing. But I'm wondering if it could be, uh, if the council agrees, it could be kind of some words in there to say, this is, you know, this is in our clean energy. Plan, part of our comprehensive plan, the investigation of micro grids. Um, just some wording in there to indicate that we are open to cool new ideas around sustainability. And in my imagination, there might be some grants or some developers that are looking to add something like that to their portfolio. So, so, and I, and I have to ask the council if I'm, you know, I might just be, uh, making things up here. But, um, to, just to indicate some kind of openness to, um, innovation around sustainability. Um, that would fit the character of our, of our town. Case somebody finds that really attractive.
Well, actually, uh, I know Alex has had conversations, um, with, uh, Energy Trust of Oregon. About incentives that could potentially be used and, and they're pretty significant incentives. Both were commercial and then residential, um, development. And I think, did we get like some language that we could kind of use? We wouldn't require, I, I don't think you'd want to require an applicant, um, a development team to participate in those programs. But they, they make it very attractive for a developer to participate in the programs. And that gets to, um, not just, uh, you know, rooftop or, uh, whatever kind of photovoltaic solar. It's also battery storage, which is really the basis of what you're talking about.
Right, and I, and I understand that there's, um, that storage technology is really evolving quickly. And I, and I think, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of bad news, you know, from the feds and all of that, but I still think that there's enough market, uh, impulse. That's what I'm hearing and, and reading about is market impulse towards this kind of innovation. I mean, Texas is doing a great job of it, for example. So I think, um, I'd like to, because I feel like there's this willingness. Um, that to go that direction on, on the behalf of our community, the part of our community. That I'd like to, um, have that in there as hopefully it'll, it might tickle the fancy of somebody who might want to apply.
What, and to member, I mean, uh, member of Council of Buyers, um, said some very similar things in her opening remarks. As being said right now, um, what if we were able to build it into the rubric? That, um, scoring is improved by ways that you, that you uphold the. Clean Energy Action Plan, for example, or that you're able to use even send it. I mean, I don't want to make up the language, but. You know, that's the point, that's kind of the direction.
Yeah, that, and if I could just add, that's really strong here is the community benefit of it. So community solar is for folks who can't afford solar panels or can't put solar panels. You know, so it's, it's not just green for green sake, it's green to help lift up our community.
Okay, I'm going to get us, uh, moving along here so we can, um, get our, our big, big agenda, uh, off on time tonight.
Um, if, if I could, um. Pick up the, uh, the question about the Gateway Hub. So, um. In order to, uh, put forward a, a proposal, I think, a, a realistic proposal to the regional peer body. For a, uh, a building of substantial size. Um, that would, I think, really meet the, the goals and the intent of, of the city in terms of a business incubator. And not, uh, take too much funding away from the infrastructure project such that we couldn't. Fully execute the infrastructure project. Um, I proposed, uh. Approximately a million dollars from the sale of the balance of this site. Towards that, uh, the sort of proposed, well, not sort of, the proposed. Sources and uses in terms of the budget of building the, the incubator hub. And I guess, uh, so I, I think there are, there are certainly other places. I think there are opportunities for grant funding and others that could reduce the, 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 um. The need for city and tourer funds to come up with the rest of that project. I think there are certainly, uh, ways, and we actually discussed this directly with the, the peer regional body. And, and OHCS, that there is a recognition that a five thousand square foot building, which was what the, the project was pitched at. May not ultimately, we may not ultimately have the funds to build that. Perhaps as a first phase of the project, and there was an objection that that would cripple the project. Or make the project unacceptable to OHCS, OHCS. But, um, I do, um, I think the way that Matt's written this, you know. Gives us the opportunity to, to have that conversation, writing down the land value by. Just a dollar more than seven, so, uh, just to be clear, by writing down land value, we just ma- basically mean a discount. Uh, on the land value versus what the market value would be. Writing down that land value, um, by more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Requires the, the, is sort of the threshold at which a developer has to use prevailing wage. So. In, uh, giving, giving incentive of buying down the property by exactly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is probably not a wise approach. Um, buying it down by something that's close to that amount. Could be a wise approach or by, or offering it to buy down, buy it down significantly. Like maybe twice that, that seven hundred thousand dollars. But I think that's one of the ways we probably could describe in the RFQ, sort of the way that we're expecting this negotiation to go. Though we would, I expect, uh, a negotiated price that's redu- that's buying down the price. But not, but not in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, yeah, so I, I, I just wanted to share that. See if there are questions and also highlight that there are some timing issues, there are challenges here. Um, and OHCS has, uh, the day of that, that meeting, uh, gave me some several. Different messages about exactly what they, um, see in terms of. The required deadline for performance of the project. So I guess the other thing that I wanted to be really clear with, with, uh, with the board and council about today is. While the regional body did approve, um, our request. Or they did agree to make a recommendation to OHCS to approve that request. We still have some hurdles to get through with OHCS concurring that, that that project makes sense. And certainly, you know, me coming back to you all and making sure that we're all clear. On, on what we've had to agree to, to get there is a significant hurdle. To completing the change of that, of that project. And that points to some of the uncertainty that Matt was referring to and, and one of the reasons that. It's probably not appropriate for this to be an R, an RFP process at this point. So, yeah, I just wanted to put some of those things out on the table.
Question. Thanks, yeah. Can you remind me what the appraised price is, is for the, the land that would be, um, developed?
So we, we haven't done, um, a recent appraisal that I'm aware of. The comps that we've looked at, um, the best, the best comps were around four hundred thousand dollars an acre. And so balance of the, of the parcel is about one point five million dollars. You know, that's o- obviously only if someone's willing to pay.
Thousand is, is because it's half, if it's more than, it's not.
Seven hundred fifty thousand is actually just a set number. It just happens to be half of.
Yeah, I thought it was like it's more than fifty one percent or in public, then, then a kick, bully kicks in.
Totally coincidental. And that's the cumulative contribution that the agency can make before you cross that threshold. There are some things I, and this is stuff that we really need to research, but. You know, I think you can do things, for example, with permit fees, obviously deferring SDCs. Doing other things with SDCs, you might be able to do, uh, without adding to that cumulative amount. But, um, yeah, land costs, uh, you know, other redevelopment or pre-development. Costs, you know, if you paid for engineering, architecture, things like that. I think all of those things would go forward that, um, that threshold.
Oh, wait, sorry, I'm just clicking what you said. So if we paid, so if seven hundred fifty thousand is the threshold. And we paid two hundred thousand for an engineering study, that would count towards the seven hundred fifty that would push it past the.
Yeah.
Past the edge where it has to be prevailing wage.
Yes.
So we don't want to, uh, okay.
I think that's one of the things that gets caught up in that. And I, I don't know if Dave has different experience or not, but. But we would want to look at those things closely. I mean, in every legislative session, uh. You know, there are interest groups that try to expand what, uh, qualifies. At, you know, what goes toward that seven hundred forty nine thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars. So you do, we, we'll have to continue to pay attention to that.
Cause, uh, oh, sorry, I'll just say that, you know, historically we said, oh, we're just going to get, sell it for a dollar, right? That was, that was the thing that we were, we, we would, that I had back in my mind from twenty nineteen.
I think it's one of those, you have to be careful, you know, what you wish for if you're the developer, because. Uh, some of the construction could be, some of the residential construction could be exempt from prevailing wage, but the commercial most certainly would not be. Uh, if they cross that.
Didn't somebody in this room say that commercial was almost always prevailing wage regardless? Thought I heard that.
Well, so. It's, the differential is gr- is typically greater on residential. But, um. But thi- this is one of the reasons we were early on having conversations about potential, the potential for. Separating a commercial from a residential project, um, because there's interactions between. I'm forgetting the exact, the exact dynamic that, uh.
She didn't mean to ping you down.
We'll bring back that, that, um.
It, it was really just a curiosity question.
I mean, I think these are important, important questions, but, and given the complexity of it, it just speaks to the. Need to negotiate these things out, because different developers will experience, or the way they view the world financially. Different pieces of this are more valuable to some developers than others, depending upon the financing tools that they use.
Yeah.
Counselor Penomra?
Yeah, and this is my last question that was on my list and, and actually Counselor Colay asked me to ask about that. So apparently there've been changes in condo laws, uh, recently. And his curiosity question was, does that affect, does that need to, should that affect? Could that affect what we're, what we're planning to do housing wise?
So they reduced the, um, period for construction defect liability. Uh, which is a good thing. Um, and, you know, it may be that developers in Oregon. Uh, react to the change in the law very quickly and they decide that, oh, we're going to do, uh. We'll do condos now because the construction defect liability has changed. But the thing that didn't change in the condo laws, condos are still formed the same way. Um, and that's still a problem.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, we, somebody may want to do ownership in, you know, up, in a, what would otherwise be an apartment. That'd be interesting to see, and that would be good, you know, we could get ownership of it too, it's like that.
And, and the draft, the way it's structured certainly provides them the flexibility to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do you have any other, uh, needs, Matt, or talents?
I, I think that's pretty much it unless you have any thoughts on how you want to get involved. I mean, we'll. Ask you to appoint a scoring panel, or I don't know how you want to do that necessarily, or who wants to be involved? So, if, if anybody. So if, if anybody, you know, on this body or city council would like to be on the panel, those are things that we can talk about quickly right now. We don't have to make any final decisions, but it's just something to think about when we come back in September. So you have an idea like who you want to.
Counsel Penomar.
Me, me, me. I'm curious. I'd like to participate, not necessarily to, to, I mean, I'd be open to scoring, but I wouldn't have to. I'm just, I'd like to um, be present uh, for these discussions.
Counsel Medina.
I would like to be on this foreign committee or however we do that.
Counsel Byers, do you have any comments? Yeah, I um, I just want to make sure I understand kind of the the structure of this. So it would be an appointment for recommending body. Is that right? They'd be making a recommendation to the council based on a rubric. And um, uh, I just would, uh, maybe this is a question for Dave. I can see um, opportunity for I mean, I, I appreciate when Counsel Penomar and Counsel Medina say they want to be involved. I think that's a good idea. I especially, you know, thinking about seasoned counselors that have been with this project so deeply and new counselors that are digging in deep to this whole new process. I think that's going to be valuable. But I would wonder if other committee, like I can imagine some planning commissioners being valuable to this process um, from a land use perspective. And there has been some kind of fun and unique land use stuff out there. And and some of them uh, having tenure with our community uh, with with this project. That being valuable. So this would just be a regular committee appointment open to all applicants. Is that correct? I mean, you could, you could be on the planning commission and also, or you could be on Together for Talent and also um, apply for this if you wanted to, right? And then also open to to uh, community at large.
Yes, you could structure it that way. And in, and in any event, it would be, since it's making a recommendation to the council, it would be a uh, a public body, subject to public meetings law.
And we wouldn't be limited to a small number if a lot of people were interested in, right?
Right.
Counsel Penomar.
Yeah, I'm wondering if the job is, well, first of all, I'm a little concerned about having a scoring committee that's too big. But I, I like the idea of a committee that's like um, able to, you know, make recommendations and stuff like that or ask questions. But like the actual scoring, I think should be fairly limited. But my question for you, Dave, is is if, if by like scoring applications or something like that, they're actually making recommendation to staff, like doing staff's job in a way, would it, would that be like a staff committee?
You could do it either way. If it's making recommendations to the staff, it wouldn't be subject to public meetings law. But staff would have the ability to ignore uh, the recommendation of the committee and then make staff's own recommendation to the council. So just.
Yeah, I'd be less inclined.
Think that through.
To that model, but I, what I did um, think about is um, and what I did think about is um, sort of the same scenario is that if the body is making a recommendation based on a scoring rubric, um, the council wouldn't necessarily be bound um, to those recommendations either if it's a recommending body.
Of course, right.
So in some ways that rubric isn't really binding. That's interesting.
It's not binding on a final decision, no.
Yeah, okay.
It's a guide. And like I said, you, you really have to kind of um, uh, stop yourself from, you know, using the number or the numbers as something that is absolutely definitive. You know, it, it helps that body make a recommendation. It helps council make a final decision about who they want to work with, if any. But I mean, there's lots of discretion and it's not scientific or anything like that.
I, I'd say it first and foremost, it helps focus the discussion.
Yeah.
My other comment is you'd want to make sure you identify that fact, you know, in the uh, in the RFQ.
Yeah, I agree.
So I'd be interested in hearing more from Counsel Penomar about uh, your thoughts about the difference, because I noticed that you uh, yeah, what are your thoughts about that?
Well, I'm, I'm, since we're dealing with, you know, potentially private companies, I'm just wondering if if everything is so public, is there um, you know, the, the evaluations and all of that and the scoring and stuff like that, is there any, is it, does that, are they used to that? Is that deter in any way at this, you know, the RFQ stage?
I believe there are, there are certain materials that if we were to ask for them are eligible for exclusion from public, public documents. If, if, if we're asking for certain financial information, that would be technically trade secret. They could, that, that I, I think we're unlikely to ask for things that would qualify as that, but if they wanted to give us that kind of information, there, there are provisions to exclude that kind of uh, information from public, uh, public document.
Well, companies may also submit um, responses to the RFQ that include an agreement to exclude certain portions of what they submit from public scrutiny. And that, that's permissible.
Right. I, I guess that, you know, my only kind of reluctance would be that if it would put a damper on uh, the response that we might get in any way. And I don't know that it would. And so that would be my only question, since this is something that's usually handled by staff.
And I, I, at least in my experience, usually these kinds of things are handled by, the recommendations are made to the staff, then staff makes a recommendation that is staff's judgment to the council, when the council makes final decision. Is there much difference in the outcome to be likely?
Yeah.
You know, on the one hand, having an appointed committee creates transparency, which you know, there's a lot of value in having um, this process be part of the public record. I know that there's a lot of people that are really interested in knowing all of the aspects of this. Um, and on the other hand, the, the outcome of a staff body comes to the council anyway, and that process is a public process. So um,
As, as is the work product that they, that they put in the staff report.
Yeah.
All of that um, information that was gathered and kind of processed.
Right.
One, one just argument for um, having it be a committee that reports to this to, to a staff is I, I, I think a number of proposers tend to think they're going to not get involved in politics as much that way. And that, and not only that, but that the decisions will be made. I don't know, put it more on the basis of content than on presentation, um, the goodness. So that's just a factor to think about.
Yeah. Are there any other comments on this? I mean, we're not making a decision on this tonight.
No, you don't have to.
A lot to think about and um, but yeah, there's value in both ways. Really, I can see it. Um, so I appreciate you bringing that up, Counsel Penomar, and questioning that for a deeper discussion. Yeah. All right. Are there anything else um, from anybody? With that, we'll go ahead and go to item number item number three is discussion of revenue options, budgetary trends and related public engagement. My goodness, do we have enough time for that?
I, I think it'd be good to introduce.
Okay.
And uh, I, I think this is, so thank, thank you, Mayor, Chair. And I'm really speaking to you, to you all more with your city council hats on, on this, on this topic. And um, I, I think we're, we're going to continue to talk about this approach a- as it develops. So uh, the, the core of, I think, what I'm proposing to you all here is to uh, begin to have a very much an evolving conversation where we are uh, the, the lead staff, really Dana and myself and, and the chief working up a presentation about what we believe the problem is. We test that internally with the leadership team of the, of the city. We next text that, test that with, with the staff of the city. We next text, test that with the budget committee. Next test, test that with um, community leaders and stakeholders, perhaps inviting folks from, you know, in other elected positions. And each stage, we are testing the effectiveness of our message, refining that message and refining our materials, working towards a more public, a, a truly, you know, open, public discussion. Perhaps I, it'd be great if we could get there within this calendar year or very early in the next calendar year. So um, I guess first I'd like, I wanted to understand if that, that made sense to you all. And then secondly, um, and, and that pub, sorry, and that public, that public uh, true, public uh, stage could both be town halls and the kind of neighborhood meetings that we talked about or meetings, you know, for uh, public meetings focused on particular audiences, whether those are you know, a meeting that's in Spanish for native Spanish speakers, a meeting that's focused on youth. And then um, and so want to check if that, if that approach made sense as sort of a working plan for this fall. And the, I think my secondary question is, ha, uh, to what degree is are you all interested in using sort of broader survey instruments, whether those are electronic instruments or telephone survey? And um, you know, given that they're, they're pretty blunt. Um, we're talking about fairly complicated topics. And um, and we're probably not talking about a scientific survey. And I, I think that question is both about this fall. And the answer may be different about sort of the, the, the spring phase where we're actually putting proposals. Um, I've talked too, too much, given the limited time we have, but.
I think that was great. Um, I'm going to take Counsel Byer and then Counsel Penomar.
First, I really appreciate this process that's been outlined. Um, and even though I don't see it completely outlined, I do hope that there's a real plan for holding space for council members to participate in these in ways where we aren't inadvertently forming an unnoticed public meeting, of course. And in regards to the survey, I think you're right. I think surveys about the topics themselves could create more confusion than answers, but I do think one really powerful survey that could be used is to find out how people get their information so that we know how to communicate with them most effectively moving forward. That survey wouldn't have to wait very long to be started, and it would really help us figure out how to allocate resources moving forward.
And the scientific nature is kind of irrelevant because, yeah, it's interesting. Thank you.
Counsel Penomar.
Thanks. I also really love this report. I think the approach is spot on. I, I think there's also a really a good angle of like, you know, civic, um, not just civic engagement, but civic uh, education. Angle to this. And I feel like there's, I think there's a professor, retired professor at SOU that wants to teach civics for free for like the rest of her life or something. I'm wondering if there's an angle that there's another grant for that. I, just two more things real fast. Survey platform for $10,000. I think Survey Monkey, their most expensive premier thing is $120 a month. So that kind of hit me funny. Um, and then one other idea before you answer that. Since we're short on time, is that I've seen those experiments where they give a neighborhood like $1,000 or $5,000. Say, okay, you guys figure out how you want to spend it on this park or that park or something like that. Um, I'm wondering if we could, with grants in this process, introduce that. How would you all spend the money? How, what's addition, decision process? You come to spend this, you know, small but significant amount of money to make your neighborhood better, your community better. All of this is just kind of as part of the educational idea.
Thank you. I think your, your point about SOU, I think, is both, both uh, I think there, this could be a really fascinating student uh, project to involve students in. In terms of the, the survey cost, yes. I mean, you could, you could do it very cheap. Um, in which case it's kind of not necessarily something we need to worry about. But to do it seriously, a qual, you know, to use Qualtrics, basically.
To use what?
Qualtrics is sort of the academic research standard um, survey platform. Is it spending, the, the sort of the, the minimum level is.
Thanks for that. Uh, may I say something?
Counsel Byers.
To that point, if you are just trying to really math how people find their information, I don't think that's required, that survey platform.
Agreed. So yeah, it would, it would, it's, it would be required if we are trying to achieve some level of, of scientific sampling and, and so, you know, to, to be relying on sort of the percentages that we're finding. I, I, I think, uh, you know, to be serious about the results of a survey requires a tool like that. But I think if you're just, you're essentially gathering qualitative information from people, certainly Survey Monkey or another tool like that is.
Well, to that point, I think especially if there is a significant number of responses to a survey, that's saying this is how I get my information. It helps you craft an RFP if you're looking for outside support in getting these communications out really consistently and effectively. Uh, you know exactly how much time is going to be spent and effort on each form of communication.
My input to this process, which I think is amazing, um, and um, well, for all the reasons that have already been said. My input is that um, throughout the process, I think it's going to be really important to be very, very communicative also with the council as you test these out with the different groups. And I say that because I believe it's going to be really important that everybody's on the same page with communication and that that nobody's left behind in um, understanding any updates or anything like that. I think, I think the potential for misinformation is really, really great um, in these types of discussions and making sure that everybody, including the public, to the best, you know, like that information information delivered at public meetings type, type stuff. Just making sure that there's constant communication. Perhaps even, you know, lots of communication in the uh, talent news and review, just to keep the whole story on the top of the table. Uh, so that, um, so that, you know, folks who misunderstand or would, would um, otherwise, you know, provide misinformation in the community, um, can, can have an opportunity to get, have, have total access uh, to the most recent information. Uh, and, or, or those who are confused by other information could have, can, can access information easily to to align their thinking and decide, you know, how they want to see things. So yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess I'm just saying communication, communication, communication. Um, but otherwise, super exciting. And what a great opportunity this is for our community and really appreciate you bringing this approach to, to the table, Alex. Uh, Counselor Penomar.
Yeah, I just wanted to um, to circle back on the, on the Qualtrics. And if, if we have, if there, if it could be used for other data gathering things, I would be keen on having a tool like that for the city, because I have lots of ideas. Data, data, data.
The data, data. Um, all right, if there's, uh, do you have anything else to add, Alex?
No, thank you.
Then anybody else? All right. Uh, item number four is adjournment. This meeting adjourned at 6:50. We'll get, take a five minute break and we'll start uh, the council meeting at 6:55. We'll get, take a five minute break and we'll start the council meeting at 6:55.